Court will come to order. It is Monday, June the 2nd, two thousand and twenty-five. Two o'clock in the afternoon, and the Commissioners' Court is now in session for a special meeting. And we have visitors' input. I have a number of people that have signed up to talk on one point one. But we're going to take one point two first and get them out of here so they have to work through all this. And that'll free up a seat, I think, so. Let me go ahead and call the first agenda item. We'll do the input when we get to the agenda item. One point two is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to determine whether to issue a request for proposal for the lease of Juvenile Detention Center. And this is on the agenda. The way we did this last time when we had people interested in leasing our, the older juvenile detention center, was we submit a request for proposal, and then they respond. They contacted us and let us know that they had interest, so we prepared an RFP, and then they respond to it. And so that's what we're trying to do again. And I know, did Jason go outside?
No, sir.
Okay, he's here.
Hi, Your Honor.
And the way we did it last time was to, we filed the RFP, and then they responded, and we took it from there.
Yes, Your Honor.
And for those of you that don't know what we're doing with that, we've been approached by Jacqueline Klein, who is a, has her own consulting company, and she locates grant opportunities. And there is a grant opportunity for juvenile detention beds right now. And it's with the U.S. Marshals Office, and what they're trying to do is to have places to keep the immigrants that are detained as they cross the border, in order to be able to get them to their, the proper courts they need to go to. And we have a forty-eight-bed facility, probably forty-two comfortably, but we have a facility that we're not using. We closed that facility back in two thousand and seventeen for fiscal reasons, just it was a money issue. And the federal requirements of, what you have to do to be able to house juveniles is have eyes on twenty-four-seven. And we just don't have the people in the community that would take those jobs, and so we ended up closing it down. So I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and submit an RFP for the lease of the juvenile detention facility.
I'll second.
We've got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Who's phone?
I have some requests of you all to please study the RFP, I can't see them. Study the RFP that we issued, that y'all issued
Right.
back in two thousand and twenty-three and evaluate what you want in the new RFP, because it won't be the same. And so if you'll all have a look at that, it'll need to come back to the court for approval, but at least you'll know what you want in it.
And what she's alluding to is one of, we've had offers from TJJD, the Texas Juvenile Justice Department, to bring their worst kids and house them here in Kirk County, and we told them, no, thank you. That's not what, we're willing to house kids, but we don't, we don't want the ones that got put at TJJD. And those would be some of the parameters that we would probably put in this RFP. Okay, we've got a motion in the second. Those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now, let's talk about visitor input. We've got a lot of you here, a lot of people signed up to talk. I'm going to go ahead and call the agenda item, and y'all will be thinking about it. Do y'all want to talk before we discuss the item or after we discuss the item? We're going to do all the public input at one time. So, the agenda item is one point one. It's a discussion regarding the new Kirk County Animal Control Facility, including but not limited to additional expenditures, matters related to the construction requirements, and upcoming expenditures. This is Commissioner Holt's topic. So, just to show hands, how many people want to talk first? Raise your hand. How many of you want to talk after? Okay, we'll talk after. Okay, so we'll start the discussion. Ms. Holt?
Yes, sir. First of all, thank y'all for coming. A lot of interest in this. I didn't know that my main effort was your main effort as well, but it appears that it is. There's been a lot of coordination in order to get here today, and I am very grateful for those that have been involved with that, not only on the court, but around the room, from Reagan, Givens, if you know, really is our customer in all of this, to a special court-designated coordinator, Jonathan Letts. Spent enormous amount of time before, during, and I know he will after as well. From all the folks that have helped us from the construction side, starting off with Peter Lewis, our architect, who's with us here today, J.K. Bernhardt and his construction group, and all the subs that go along with that, which include anywhere from RS Excavation, which is already completed, to Wellborn Engineering, and others that are with his team. And lastly, all the volunteers that help out every day in the past, every day today, and every day in the future, KPA. Very grateful, Kirkville Pets Alive, for your in-kind consideration, which is enormous. But, the voters voted on a new building. And I've decided to show one thing, and I'm going to go through this one slide as we had a very key meeting on Friday, which was between Bernhardt, include the leadership, Kevin was there, with his estimator, James, and Otto, the project engineer. Very professional team that are doing the work. They were there as with Peter, myself, Jonathan Letts, Reagan, and that was really about it. And I kind of dropped the bomb on them on a Friday afternoon. Who doesn't love that? For like, hey, thank you for everything you've done. Find us a way to save money because we, we have a tough sell in front of the court, and I'm going to discuss what the options are. In yellow, in front of the county commissioners, the little tabs, is what I'm going to talk through first. Yellow is the, I would say it's a partially operational capable. It's what Jonathan Letts and I discussed previously, his assessment of what is needed if we could find money in order to get this partially operating and capable. In pink is what it would take to get us initially operating capable. Sorry, I'm a military guy. I'm bringing in some of that language, but for me, it makes sense, and I'm explaining it to you. FOC, a fully operational capable building, is, has everything you've always wanted into it, from design to build. It has every space filled. It has room for all the people you don't have, and it has desks for people you haven't hired yet. It is fully stocked. Partially operating capable is where it has enough for what your current requirements are, and it's all new stuff. How fun, right? If budget wasn't an issue, and you could buy what you wanted, that's in yellow. If you're doing it on the cheap, because if somebody expressed to me, you're a tag, which is a type German, you can figure out what the A is. I'm actually not. I'm English, but in that respect, your pink is the tagline, right? Which is everything you can do to move something and still use it. This is where Reagan and his team went through Charlie's here. I did not mention you. I've done that twice now. Charlie's been a huge part of this group too, but he likes to be from the side, Charlie Hastings, in all of our meetings and assessing things. So, in yellow, I'm going to talk about every single one of those and what they are. First of all, overall, the top right, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars was the partially operating capable line. There are ways to pay for it, which are up there, but I'm not going to talk about that right now. I'm going to talk about everything involved in it. We're talking about the big items first, and those are the pictures you see down lower left. Dog kennels. No way around it. We have to buy them, or we don't have a facility. Period. They can't be moved because they're concrete in the old building. We have to buy them because dogs are our big business. Sorry, just is what it is. Dogs consume him daily, coming and going. So, in order to do that, there are a couple different options we have for dog kennels. The partially operating capable is thirty-two dog kennels at a price of around three hundred eleven thousand dollars. I'm going to give you rough figures. And in there also includes, and you can't get around, the isolation and the quarantine dog kennels, each of which are thirty-six thousand dollars. Secondly, cat kennels. For new cat kennels, eighty-eight thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars. That's what the building was designed for, and that's what new kennels would cost to go into that design as fabricated, or as, sorry, as designed and being built right now. Other large-ticket items are the FFE, that's furnishing, fixtures, fixtures and equipment. Anything from refrigerator to that drape, to that chair you're sitting in, to that desk, to that cubicle. If it was all new to be moved and installed, there are companies that would love to do it. I've run into this many times, and if you've ever moved into a building commercially, you have too. That is a price of about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. New cubicles, new conference table, some new furniture, and that does include moving some items that were in the old building. But that's the gold-plated request of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. The Guardian system, that comprises of really three different things. Is it nice? Yes. Is it up to sheriff's standards? Absolutely. They use that in high-risk situations. The Guardian system is cameras around the exterior, a panic button, and Reagan, what's the third? Access controls. Thank you. The swipe badges. Very, very good equipment, matches what the rest of the county has, but it's not currently what is used, and all the people in Orange know that, at our current facility. Other large-ticket items, new pens for large animals. Let's say the sheriff gets a call, and Commissioner Holt's horses are outside again, and he has to come get them because they went over the cattle guard.
True story.
And they have to be put in timeout. They would be brought up here, put in timeout. It's normally short duration. I want my horses back, okay? But it's still for new pens to hold up to twelve animals, which typically doesn't happen very often, especially to that number. For large animals, it's different. They're not going to fit, of course, in a dog kennel. They're going to have to be large cattle pennals, or cattle pens. And we currently have some, but new would be a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars. That includes overhead, some electricity, some lights, and different panels. That is a considerable cost, right, to have new stuff built? For some reason, my stuff got cut off to the left. That, to the left, is the rainwater collection grant, and I believe it's around, help me out, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, thank you, for the rainwater grant. I don't, I didn't know what the color to put that because it's something that's required for the building with two different water features. It's not water features, but water collection devices, storage tanks, gutters all around, pumps, and it feeds into the kennel system. So it's a part planned in the building for required raw water to clean out kennels. But we have a grant behind that. We should have had a grant for more, but we don't. And that's where it brings us today for the rest of the gold-plated, if you will, course of action, which is partially operating capable. Lastly, the fence around the building and the entrance in the front. There is fencing around the building itself, which is a requirement, because dogs do get loose. That's why we got them in the first place. But at that location, it is to have one rolling gate, automatic, and then one bifold gate, which we could open or close if we had a large trailer to bring around. But we have one clicker gate, if you will, if you're familiar with that on your properties, that opens as such, just like a garage. And then a fence around the building itself. I'm not talking about a large perimeter fence, just talking about a fence around the building, which is required for security, and they currently have at the existing building. The entrance sign and other fence gates is eighteen thousand dollars for some signage and fence around the front. And then I bring your attention to the right, which is kind of in scale, is where there's a cemetery. And they wanted, not part of the original scope of work, but they have wanted and expressed the desire to have a screen there between our building and really our lot, which we've had there for quite some time, which is Road to Bridges Lot for Aggregate, and a cemetery, which is there. I think it's Brown Cemetery. Charlie's shaking his head. Yeah, I got that name right. Brown Cemetery, which is there to the right. So that total, if you will, like the cheapest we could do, partially operating capable, what Jonathan's hard study has been, and what we looked at and reviewed very hard, is four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. You know, the core of it, I've explained already, is that picture on the lower left, which is dog kennels.
That's this year.
That is the total cost, and I'm not saying what year we pay for it.
Well, the spreadsheet Jonathan had on there had that cost for one year and three hundred and thirty-three thousand for the next year. Correct?
Okay, thank you. Yep, small subsidy, but important.
That comes up to eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Let me, let me go, let me finish a little bit, and then we'll go into that.
Eight hundred and twenty?
Ways to come up with this. There are two different, there are two different sheets.
That first page is one year, and then the next page is the second year. It totals up to eight hundred and twenty thousand.
So, let me go into the pink. Reagan and I, without, by the way, without any influence from anyone else, did our own tour, our own talking, and looked at things really hard in the type plan, right? Which is basically IOC, Initially Operating Capable. What would get them in that building, and they could operate with everything old and help moving everything that's old into that new building, and this is what we come up with. And that could get you operating in a very minimal capacity. But we also had our design team, Kevin and his crew, look about what savings you could get from the building itself if you didn't build it to its current plan. Now imagine dropping that on the estimator on a Friday afternoon. Do you think he was probably happy? No, he was not. So, this is very preliminary. I want to make sure all the people with pens and papers and things understand. The building that we're looking at, they could probably save about, maybe up to forty thousand dollars by not building parts of the building. Understanding the majority of expense in a five-point-nine-billion-dollar building is in concrete, is in laying stuff out, is in metal, is in electricity, is in the plumbing, and is in the HVAC. It's not in opening up a Sally Port. So, now that I've got your attention on that, we're going to go into the pink. There are four ways we could save with the building itself, and we discussed this with Peter and the builders and the team. Sally ports. Instead of Sally ports, would you drive through with big rolling gates, and then you put the gates down, and they have other gates with panic bars? Leave it open, probably like many of your garages here, which aren't really a garage. It's really a pull-through breezeway. You could do the same with a Sally Port, which requires operations to have a tight hand on animal control, to get it out of the vehicle into the building itself. But there are two Sally Ports where we want nice big rolling gates and small gates. You could leave that open and not pay the money for the metal and the rolling gates. You could save about ten thousand dollars each for that. Okay? Third option with the building itself is, near the Sally Port, there was some storage of, on here, it may be hard to see, but it is refrigerators, freezers. It is a lot of electrical storage, and euthanized animals go out there, unfortunately. So in that area itself, you can move all of that into where the future vet office is, because it's already equipped for that, and have that as dry good storage only. What that would do, just have a dry good storage, and in the future, should you need to equip that, and you do have a vet, you could retrofit that room with electrical. It would have lights, but it's just dry good only, just basic. The fourth area that we've asked them to look at in the building itself is if you change the attic. Instead of have a large amount of storage in the attic, it's a no-permitted access. You have to have storage in other places, in the building itself, or in other rooms that are available. Understanding this building is almost, what do we say, three times the size, Reagan, or two? About three times the size of the current footprint and square footage. So you're going to have room, whether it's in offices or other spaces, for storage and equipment. And keep that in mind, because we're going to move old furniture, right, into a building which is three times the size. You're going to have space. So if you go through the four different areas, which are dry storage, open Sally Port times two, and a attic, you come up with four options that a builder would have to try to estimate with greater detail and certainty to see the savings. But we have estimated, after speaking with them, about a forty thousand dollar credit could be applied if we decided to do none of that in the building itself. That is a drastic move. Make no mistake. Okay, other savings that we think we could do. Kennels, the big expense. Let's talk about kennels. Do we need thirty-two, or could we get away with eighteen? We believe you could get away with half of the kennels for now. One room would be empty. But you do have some crates that could be set up in there that are currently in storage. Kind of would look makeshift, but that could happen. Eighteen kennels, you can't do without in the main dog kennel storage. That's in pink, right in the middle. To the left of that, you still are going to have to have the isolation and the quarantine. That's the majority of their work, is handling dogs, and it goes through isolation and quarantine into the adoption areas. So you still have to have five dog kennels in each. There's no way around a one thirty-four, thirty-six, and thirty-six K. Period. I wish there was, but there's just not. Second is pens. Hundred and fourteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars for nice new pens to hold up to twelve large animals. You can get away and move the existing old pens. I looked at them. They're not that bad. It's still going to be building a similar overhead shaded system with wood, not metal, with wood and using the same metal on top. You've done it. I've done it. It can be done. They're decent Prefort-like kennels that can be moved. But they only hold three animals. That's really about it. Any excess capacity currently or in the future would have to come from across the street at Hill Country Youth Event Center. We know that. If it's outside of what it currently can hold. But that's possible. You know, you're really not using much more than that right now. Jonathan found us a fence, which I am very grateful for. Honestly, it's ideal. It has the large rolling fence, the right size. It has a bifold fence, just like what the design's called for, and it's nine hundred feet long. We only asked for seven hundred. So you've got excess capacity. The problem, it's in the ground. UGRA is ready to give that to us, and it is an ideal seven-foot fence that I would love to move. But we have to figure out how to get those poles out of concrete, how to move it, how to install it correctly. And it has a brand name on there already, which is very familiar to a lot of you people if you've done fence here locally. That guy knows what he's doing, and his name is on that fence, and we'd have to probably contract with him, or he'd probably figure out who it is by now, in order to get that fence installed correctly to its current design. Moving a fence, especially a chain link, is not easy, but I'm very grateful for the offer from UGRA to use their fence. But I still think there's an install fee of around four thousand dollars. It is a way to save about eight thousand dollars worth of money. Pretty cool. And they need to get rid of that fence. Camera system. Guardian is nice, very top of the line, but they currently have a ring system with three cameras. Rings work pretty well, as long as you have internet, right, and enough internet to do it. And in the country, that can be difficult, but in this circumstance, they do have the internet. You can increase their three cameras to seven overall, which is a minimum for about a, that is a thousand-dollar cost. If you're looking at the screen and you see ten, that is a typo. Excuse me. That is a thousand-dollar cost for four more cameras. If you go up the picture north of that a little bit, cat kennels. I did consult people about cat kennels, and what I realized, and after seeing it with Reagan, is they have really good cat kennels that are currently over there. They are stainless steel. They all on rollers. They work pretty well. They may not be to the same number in the building, but this one makes sense to me. Use the cat kennels that are already there and move them. They are actually pretty nice. I wouldn't be embarrassed to show people those. And frankly, we have folks in town that help us out with a lot of cat adoptions. They have a lot of different places where they hold cats, at different places, and I'm grateful for that. So you don't deal with a lot of cats. You deal with a lot of cat So, you don't deal with a lot of cats. You deal with a lot of cat movement and adoption, and we have folks that help us out with that in-kind consideration. For furniture, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. That's a big cost for us to consider. I think we use everything they currently have and don't spend a dime on anything new. That will get us into the new building. That's where I become tight again, if you will. But I look through the quality of the stuff they have. It's actually pretty good. No, we're not pulling cabinets out of the walls. We will be taking desks apart, and part of the challenge is a move of all that equipment. In the previous yellow tag for a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, it's all new stuff coming in, they all move it for you, and they all set it up. That's why it costs so much. But when we would have to move it, we would have to ask for help from our county officials. I've asked for help, uh, on a Friday afternoon. I guess I'll give them a nod, okay. I have, I've got response that there are some great folks that would help us move with coordination in the future with some of his manpower, both temporary and permanent manpower. Um, in order to move this with county equipment, I'm looking at the judge, or Heather, with county equipment and county trailers and county personnel. That's the right way to do it, to do a move on the free. It's not very easy, but it would be about a two-day thing to help move all the old stuff. It's not cheap, it's not free. I wish it was, but it's not. The big portion of that is dog kennels, and it still comes up. If we tried to do it this year to get initially operating capable, it's still two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And if you really made our, our design and build team take away some of the capability of that building being attic storage, dry storage, and Sally ports, which are really breezeways, you could apply maybe a forty thousand dollar credit. It's still coming up with about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars in order to make this happen. And I don't see another way to do it this year. Now, how do we come up with the money? Back to Commissioner Jones' question, now or in the future, there are ways. Uh, but it's really about what's the right way to do this, and I leave that to the court to discuss and figure that out. There is budget line unused at the end of the year. They've already identified with the help of our folks where some of that could come from out of their current budget, because not, not everything is spent at the end of the year sometimes and you, what that means is somebody's going to go without a road, frankly. That's what that means. One of us is going to go, maybe two of us, without a road. It's on the current schedule. Or somebody is gonna not hire somebody in their office. That is one course of action, and there are two others. The twenty-twenty-six budget. Okay, we could put this in as a budget line. No one likes that, uh, right now. And that would be difficult with that amount of money at four eighty-seven, but in next year's budget uh, for expenditure. And then third, is just do nothing until we sell that property. It is a kind of tailor-made property, as you know, right there at Veterans Parkway, but it's also in a very good location, high-traffic area that continues to grow. So, that property value is on our auditor's website somewhere. I haven't found it yet, but we've discussed anywhere, it would be well over, I think, that, that amount that's on there right now. So, different options for money, and I think these are the minimum sets to consider. That's why they are different colors. And that's kind of what we came up with instead of showing you a bunch of budget spreadsheets and things like that.
Jeff, the, um,
I'm gonna take a break.
I, I figured you needed one, that's why I'm cutting in. I think what most everybody in this room would like to hear is the bottom line. You know, we had a bond of five point seven five. What's, what would it be with, what's the bottom line now?
Before his cuts, you're seven five five seven.
Bottom line's in pink. And I, I'll point out one thing, which is very important.
I mean, oh, the total complete project, if you go with what Jonathan gave us, well, that, that's before you make your cuts.
Yep.
You're at seven and a half million dollars.
If you look on the right-hand side, the issue was, this court already agreed to owner-provided equipment. It did. And it's all that in pink is owner-provided equipment. We agreed to that and contracted to it. Unless I'm wrong.
Well, that's, that, I think that's where we're, I think that's the, I think that's the problem.
Uh, dog kennels, fence.
Uh, that, all of the, all, that's the whole, the gist of this whole problem. It's never about, are we going to build what y'all voted for? We are. That's, that's what the voter voted for, and we're obligated to do that. The problem that we have is not that. The problem we have is that, that whenever it got delayed, and we talked about all this, and whether it's inflation or anything else, whenever this project got delayed, before it went out to bid, it should have been reevaluated, do we have the money to do it? Because now we're almost two million dollars out, over the cost, when you take the total figures and put it all together. And that's not what the voters voted for. They voted for everything you're describing. They voted for it actually to be all new stuff, is what they thought. And, and so, I, it's admirable, everything you're working on, all the hard work, and, and J.K. Bernard's done a great job, Jonathan has, Peter, you have, you've done an awesome job with all of it. Um, there's no question that, that, there's no fault with any of these people doing anything wrong. The fault relies, lies up here at this court. We should have reevaluated, I wasn't here, but it should have been reevaluated before you ever signed a contract with somebody for an amount that was going to throw us that far out of budget. They had not done what you're trying to do now and bring all the cost to the table. They're not doing what Jonathan did when he brought this to us last week, when I said, what is it going to cost us? Nobody's looking at a final cost analysis on this entire project. And that's where we're in trouble. And, and I don't see how we can budget an amount that was not voted for, especially during budget season, when we've got all these people coming in here asking for budget requests, and the judge is trying to figure out what I slash and cut here. And there's no way that it's fair for us to say, well, we're not going to give you all anything you want, because we gotta, we gotta bill this now. And, and go on and, and finding money, there's no such thing as found money. It doesn't exist. And, and so, we've got to somehow get this back in front of the people to cover the mistakes that were made and figure out how we're going to pay for this. And not point fingers, not trying to point fingers, but that's just the size of it, from, for me, it is. Uh, when it, when you're looking at that, that size of a, of an, you know, overage in the cost, was this project never looked at from A, A to Z to say, what's going to be the final cost in this project? And it doesn't appear that it did.
Yeah, and I took this slide on purpose, because I found it most interesting, where it had the owner category on the right, and then what was contracted on the left. There should have been a cost of all the owner stuff on the right. And that's really what we've come up with. And it was part of the,
Yeah, and, I mean, but we've already, we've already, I, I, I had Tanya prepare a small sheet for me. It's got her bond premium, bond proceeds, and her interest. And, and with, with just that, we were at six-four, right? Um, so when you look at the admin fees and construction costs, that's not your testing, the catchment system, and all of that, you're, you're, you're at six-four already with that. And so, the numbers have got to, to get closer to what the people voted for, for us to do. You can't blame it on inflation. You can't blame it on rising costs. We knew that before we ever went out on bid, because that just happened in December. Right? And, and, and then when you, when you look at this cost here, and then you add another eight hundred and twenty thousand, before your cuts up here, you're at seven million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. That is not what people voted for. That's my, that's my issue.
Well, I can't defend that figure, because I haven't seen that. I'd have to put that into paper.
Well, I got it from, I got it from Tanya, and that's all straight from her on that.
I just wanted to show where we're currently at, and hopefully we decide where we want to go and how, where that money comes from. We're not,
That's, that's the problem. Where does the money come from? And how is it fair to you folks that voted on it, the people that want it, and, and, and we agreed to build it, right? So, how is it fair, though, for us to go back and add that kind of a dollar figure to it without the public input? And not just in a commissioner's courtroom where you've got twenty or thirty people. I don't, I don't know how we're supposed to do that and move that forward. Uh, it's not anybody that is opposed to doing this project. I don't think anybody up here is. I'm not. I just want to get the budget under control.
But forty-five percent of the voters were against this project.
Yeah, but it's, it was passed. I don't care if it was one vote, it's passed, and I'm for it. Once it's passed and y'all voted for it, I am for it, hundred percent. Uh, but not for this dollar figure. That, that, that's not what we agreed on. That's not what y'all voted for. And it's not what y'all promoted, right? Uh, so, and, and how irresponsible is it for us to just spend that money and, and say, well, you know, they voted for it, so let's just do it? Now, we can. By rule, we can just say, let's, let's do it. I, I would not sleep while I'm not doing that. That, that's not, that's not good politics for anybody. It's not good being good stewards with your money, is what it's not doing. So, what are your ideas, Judge? I'm waiting on you.
I'm listening. This, this is pure chaos.
It is.
And I don't think what you're talking about is legal.
Doing what?
Huh? Going to the voters again. I don't think we can do that.
I, I know you can issue COs.
We can talk about financing techniques.
Right.
Right now, we're talking about, you're advocating that there be some sort of public input, i.e. vote, again, on this issue. And I do not think we can do that.
Well, then we can build what we can build, and you could get the building built, and it's just completely incomplete, and you're minus eight hundred thousand dollars.
That's completely and totally irresponsible.
I, well, so is spending an extra two million dollars.
Also irresponsible. Uh, we got, you know, again, uh, UK came up with this, or you and Tanya came up with this, six million.
I'm not, she's good with math.
Sure. Interest and everything.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Tanya, let's, let's go to the point. People need to be able to hear this. This is not a side conversation. Okay.
Okay, so the schedule that was put together is based on our actual expenditures and revenues for the years ending nine thirty twenty-three, nine thirty twenty-four, and then what we've spent to date in the current year as of five twenty-nine twenty-five. And then added to that was the remainder of the budget for the rest of the current year. So, with that, we've got six million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars budgeted and or spent through the end of this year.
And that's not including what Jonathan gave us.
I hate to jump to solutions, but,
No, we're open for solutions.
My recommendation is that we do open this up. We honor what the voters voted for. We're going to have to find some money from the budget. My recommendation is to find the two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Don't do that to the builder with taking apart the design, what it was currently functioned for with the Sally ports. I'm just not sure you get a lot of gain out of that, frankly, for forty thousand dollars. Because you have to find a substantial chunk of money for those, those cages. So, at two hundred and twelve, get you in there with old stuff, but new cages, bottom line, this year in November. And get them prepared for that move. I think how we're going to have to front the money, that's my recommendation. And that we dedicate the sale of that property to go back into the general fund, or whatever fund that came from. That we go on record and do that.
That was the original CIE, CIP proposal, to do exactly that. And with all the delay we've had, how much interest have we made off the bonds?
Five hundred grand.
Right. Five hundred and thirty-six thousand on interest. That was included in the figures that we were talking about.
And then, do we have any, any idea what the value of the property is, what the animal control is right now? Fred, do you remember what we've, what we were thinking that was worth?
Is that right to you, Brenda?
Sixty-seven hundred thousand dollars minimum?
Minimum, probably.
Yeah, it's not clearly identified on our appraisal district, I looked.
Well, but, but, but the point being, that, and, and then, so there's the interest that we've had since we, since we sold the bonds, we had the bonds, and we've been earning interest off of it. Secondly, there's the property that it's on right now, which is very valuable property, probably going to be a convenience store or filling station, something like that, I don't know. But it's probably worth more, I'd say closer to a million dollars. But whatever, it's valuable.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, in terms of being able to finance the animal control facility, and I've talked to a number of people, especially at KPA, I don't see one of them without discussing this, so. I have met with Kelly Hofer, uh, at Roden Bridge, and she has graciously agreed to defer and delay ordering some heavy equipment to allow us to have the cash uh, to be able to, uh, fund the completion of this building. And that's over five hundred thousand dollars. So, for whatever the mistakes were, and whatever the cause for the delay was, we can fund finishing this building. And I believe that's what we ought to do.
I don't think we have any choice but fund finishing it. It's never been my intent, and I've said that from the beginning, to, to, to try to stop this building from being built. My whole thing is, is what are we going to do about the money? And, and I don't, rob and peter to pay Paul, I mean, if that's what you're going to do, do it. But, but that's what it sounds, I mean, why did Kelly have stuff in the budget if she didn't need it? I'm, I'm just asking a question, that's,
She needs it. That's not the issue.
So, it's still going to cost us that additional money.
She's doing this out, out of, out of her heart to try to help get this animal facility complete.
Right. And then, so we're gonna, we're gonna end up having to, to blow up a big budget again for this project, is my point, because we already put another, we already put two, y'all put two hundred and thirty-six thousand in it apparently last year, or this year, that you'd already approved, right? And, and, and so now you're talking about grabbing another five hundred thousand, so we're, we're talking about taking budget money that's budgeted for a purpose uh, and putting it towards something that we just blew it on, it sounds like.
Well, okay, what would you have us do with it, Tom?
Don't, don't we always have excess funds every year in the budget? I mean, we don't, maybe no yet. But I would guess that we will have at least that much.
I'm comfortable that we have the cash flow to be able to complete the facility. Now, back to Tom's argument, you know, rob and peter to pay Paul, yeah, we're rearranging money, that, that's for sure.
Well, I don't like taking away from Roden Bridge. I mean, if, if we justified their expenditures, they should spend the money on what we authorized it for. But I'm just saying,
I was in the conference room with,
There's probably other money available that won't be spent this year. Or we can always go into the reserve just a little bit more.
Well, we happen to be blessed to have a healthy fund balance right now.
I would much rather see us go into a reserve than take them from somebody's budget.
Well, I agree with that.
Well, so what are we here to decide today? This is just a discussion. There's no, no action. So, uh, are we gonna, are we gonna complete this facility as represented and intended, or not?
I think we're at a point where we listen to people who want to speak on this.
Okay, I think that's probably, probably right. Okay, I think I've got everybody in order. If you think I called you out of order, call me out of order. The first person that signed up to speak is Gail Wright.
Gail Wright, I live here in the city. Imagine that you have signed a contract to build a five point seven five million dollar home. After the ground has been broken, the contractor says, oh, we changed the contract and we didn't really talk about it, and now we want eight hundred thousand more dollars. Would you say, oh, well, that happens. I seriously doubt it. You would stop the construction and raise hell, even maybe sue. This is not acceptable. The citizens of Kirk County are that homeowner, and we need to send a strong message that we will not tolerate being lied to and overcharged. we will not tolerate being lied to and overcharged. This is becoming a disturbing trend for both the city and the county. It appears that the only people who are being held responsible for bad business practices is the taxpayer. Please stop spending our money.
Thank you. Next is Becky Baloo.
Becky Baloo, Kirk County. I'm here for the future, to speak for the future people, citizens of this city and the county, my grandchildren, who, I didn't have to watch them all day long like I had, was asked to do for their working parents, so that they and the city can pay for things that they don't want to, we do that so much anyway. But the fact is that, um, we don't need to, to spend money, that we don't have, we don't need to take money that we do have to go for one thing and put it on something else. I believe that Commissioner Jeff had some really good ideas, and if you really want to help the citizens out, suck it up. Because we live in a, a day and age that a large number of people want what they want, and they want it now. But they don't want to pay for it. They want somebody else to pay for it. But we don't always get what we want. And we have to think of our future, and yes, um, it's money not spent wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Shelley Sandy.
I, um, Shelley Sandy, thirty-nine forty Oak Park Drive. Um, I just wanted to provide some additional information to the court for consideration on specifically some outfitting of cat kennels. I've, I've got it all typed up and will distribute it to you. I do have a couple concerns, uh, so I won't read that to you, because I know this is a long meeting. I do specifically have some concerns about the comments about reusing all of the existing equipment in the cat rooms. While there are some quality stainless steel kennels that I agree could be used short-term, they are not properly configured, not all operating well, but specifically there are laminated cabinets in there that are deteriorating. They are laminated, it's peeling, the wood is exposed, it's a corrugated wood product. And that harbors disease and all kinds of things in those rooms. It's hard to disinfect. Every time they clean it thoroughly, a little bit more falls off and the chunks fall off. And that is, one, those banks represent your quarantine kennels, and also half of the kennels in the friendly cat room. So you're decreasing capacity for a growing county. I, I know your concern was we're not overburdened with cats, we are. We get them out fast because we have so few kennels, and we have been told capacity is technically about half of the number of kennels, because we have to allow for open space for hoarding situations, protective custody issues, et cetera. So, we, we work hard on the cat kennels, so, uh, or the cats and getting them out quickly, because we know that can explode at any time, and we also know it is an ongoing issue in the county. So, um, I will give you my handouts, just so you can read at your leisure, but do have some, some concerns about reuse of some of that equipment. And overall, as a taxpayer, I was out there on the front lines petitioning, advocating for this bond election, and if there were things that were omitted in those costs, that was not the taxpayer's fault. So, uh, have some issues that suddenly now we're not getting what we had been presented. And that's not good for growing county, our stature, so, thank you.
Thank you. Just hand them over, Mr. Harris, you'll pass them down.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Charlotte Silvers.
Hi, Charlotte Silvers, Precinct Two. Voted for the bond, liked the bond, not really happy about where things are going right now, but I think that Commissioner Holt has worked hard on this, and Judge Kelly in, are coming up with methods to maybe make up that money in some form or fashion. Is it perfect? No, but we're not in a perfect world. And like you say, we did not intend on inflation going up the way it did. Commissioner Jones, you want it to go back to the community? I don't know if you're asking for a vote. If you get a vote, what's gonna happen? People say, oh, no, we've changed our minds, we don't want that. So I'm not sure where you're going with, let's take it back to the people. I'm, I'm not expecting an answer from you, but I do think there's some concerns in going that route. I do appreciate all the hard work that has gone into this. I know from Reagan and Nicole, and from other members of the commission, uh, commissioners, guys, we've gotta have this place. And nobody wants to build this really nice building and put old stuff in there. And as Shelley has said, and others, if you've talked to that were, and I, and we have dog people and we have cat people. The cat part, if you look in the feral room and stuff, is not what it needs to be. It needs to be changed, it needs to be updated, not only for the safety of the cats, but for the safety of the staff. So I hope you will consider that.
Thank you. Karen Guerrero.
Karen Guerrero, Precinct Two, also with Curville Pets Alive. And I've learned a lot today, there's a lot of work that's been done since, um, I guess the, the last meeting. And I want to say that I'm joined here by KPA board members, KPA volunteers, also other shelters and, uh, other rescue groups. And I think we all want this to happen. We're here to be supportive. Um, I'm glad to see that there's been some work done and try, maybe eliminating some things, or trying to pare down a little bit. But, uh, as you know, we were there in the beginning, we're standing here now, five years later, um, doing the same thing that we are always going to do, no matter if you're at the current facility, or if you're at the new facility. I think you all know what we do for that shelter, and it's basically volunteer support, volunteer funding, medical funding, uh, transport, everything. And so, that's kind of our perspective, how KPA is involved. And again, we, we, we are here for support, and, um, whatever we can do to, to guide y'all, and as, I wish I would have been involved, probably in that Friday meeting, I was out of town. But initially, there were some ladies here that were involved in the, the design process, and I think that it's great to listen to all the people that have been there from the beginning, and the Reagan, the staff at Animal Control, for their input. And we appreciate our ability to be involved, and I want to point out that this is, it's not about saving the animals like everyone thinks. I think it's a health and safety issue for our county. It's a law enforcement facility, and it needs to be purpose-built for that. You are rabies and animal control, and we've got to have a rabies and animal control facility that is adequate. You're currently operating out of a house that's been modified to an animal shelter, and a kennel that was donated by someone is extremely inadequate and inefficient. Money's lost every day there, and it's not a safe place to be, it's not a pleasant place to be. So however we, as a group, and the other volunteers and shelters are in here with us, can support that, let's keep talking, let us know, um, and we're here to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Keynes.
Nikki Keynes, Precinct One. I'm not gonna take back anything I said at the Commissioners' meeting on Monday, but I would like to add to it. I've been trying to figure out why we're in this predicament, and it does go back to, it might be a little bit of a time delay, it might be inflation, it might, it might include not a big enough contingency fund. But the bottom line is, when the first bid went out, and I'm assuming that there was more than one bid, when the first bid went out and it came out too high, it came out above what the voters wanted, the whole scale of this project should have been scaled down. It should have been scaled down, whether it was footage, kennel numbers, whatever. And now we're stuck, and, uh, for the voters, I don't want to call it a bait and switch, but you know, when, when they, when they vote and they say, yes, we're, we're on for five point seven five, and then we're looking at brand-new everything that they expected at over seven, I don't know what else the voters are supposed to think. We're trusting you to make the very best decisions for us, and I know that Commissioner Holt and Charlie Hastings have been squeezing the nickel. I know they have been. But I'm not sure it's gonna be enough. And, um, I really don't have an answer either, except that I think the voters need a complete answer. Like, if it was voted on and the bid came in too high, what exactly and who made the decision to cut those items, pretty much knowing that they were gonna have to be added back in to give the voters what they voted for. So, thank you.
Anne Overbee.
Hi, my name is Anne Overbee, Limit 190 Boot Hill Trail, Precinct One in Curville. Good afternoon, gentlemen, Judge. Thank you for your service. The voters voted for a new animal control facility and expect the Commissioners' Court to properly and completely complete this facility. The voted, the voters voted for the facility and against the renovations for the Hill Country Youth and the five fifty Earl Garrett projects. However, the court has moved ahead on both of those projects. Maybe you should consider reallocating the funds from those to go to something that the voters approved. The voters, excuse me, the items currently under discussion, including the kennels, to properly complete the facility, were clearly specified in the construction documents that were unanimously approved by the court. I'm sure everybody before they voted read those documents. After the construction bids were opened, it was discussed numerous times in open court, the additional cost, including the kennels, which were estimated to be between four hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure why this is coming as a surprise now. The plan the court previously discussed was to sell the old facility, and those funds should be committed to this new facility, whether it sells now or in the future. The Commissioners' Court unanimously approved the, to award the construction contract to J.K. Bernhardt by a five-to-nothing vote, and unanimously approved the current construction contract with J.K. Bernhardt in December of 2024. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerry Wolf.
Jerry Wolf, I live in Precinct Four. I came here today to get updated about this situation. I have not been following it close, except I knew things, heard things weren't going right money-wise. And I think it comes down to, after listening to what everybody has said, and I agree with a lot of these comments, I think it's maybe to reestablish confidence, perhaps, in this, in Commissioners' Court, is a detailed explanation to the taxpayers about why we are where we're at right now. Whereas do a, a budget versus actual, and why there's a discrepancy into the two, into the two numbers. It's almost unbelievable to be this late into the project and all of a sudden say we're short this many dollars. With prof, it seemed like updates or proper oversight, I'm not sure what the right words are. This issue would have been raised much sooner and some decisions could be made, uh, much further back in time, which would have affected the overall cost. I know you've got quite a challenge in your hands, I appreciate, I am not a pet person, I'll admit that, but I appreciate the work that all these, uh, people put into that facility. I know what it means to, to volunteer for something and, and to donate your time to that, and you, becomes part of your life. I mean, that's, you want to do it right, but at the same time, with the budget, with the money consideration of being short right now, I cannot see where there can be any frills whatsoever in this facility. Maybe that, that comes with time, but right now, to get this thing open for, gotta get it open for the fewest, fewest amount of dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Henneke.
Fred Henneke, twenty-five ninety-five Bandero Highway, Precinct Two, in Kirk County. I was part of the CIP. Our charge was to look from thirty thousand feet, feet down at all of the county facilities and activities, and identify for the Commissioners' Court needed capital improvements, not wishes, needed capital improvements. Some people said the Agbarn improvement was a wish. I find it interesting that now it's being funded, is a deed, anyway. Our committee, and everyone was appointed by a member of the court, I was appointed by, uh, then Precinct Two, Tom Bozner, we physically visited every operation in this county. We physically spoke with every office holder, every department head, to see what was needed and necessary. Then we had professional evaluations as to the cure for the different needs. Put those together, we had three tranches, we had the Hill Country Youth Exhibit Center, we had the, the animal shelter, and we had a kind of a general one called courthouse security. The voters voted for the animal control shelter. They did not vote for the Agbarn, they did not vote for the improvements to the security in the courthouse. Voters said, we want a new animal control shelter. We presented to the Commissioners' Court the dollars in detail that were associated with each of the tranches. And I believe that five times, the Commissioners' Court unanimously, including three of the current members of the court, voted for the projects. We gave them details, we even gave them three alternatives for the, for the Hill Country Youth Exhibit Center, and they chose one, that's the one that we put in the bond issue. They had numbers, they had scope of, of work, they didn't have detailed plans, because that comes after the construction contract. But what the voters said they wanted was an animal control shelter that fit the needs of the, of the county. There was a dollar or some stats to it, but they did not say only at this amount of money. That's what they probably assumed, but what they wanted was an up-to-date animal control shelter. And when the bond was issued, it passed, it sold, then the Commissioners' Court got involved in the construction process, which was some year and a half after the bond was approved. So I think it's incumbent upon the Commissioners to fund a good animal control shelter. I would suggest you don't have to fund everything that's in the projection. I like Commissioner's Holt way of, of bringing the costs down, doing what we have to do now to open up facility, but leaving the space for improvements. That's the way you do some of these big projects. Speaking to the Commissioners' Court, come on, guys. Each of you ran to be elected. You spent your money, you spent my money, you spent somebody else's money to get elected and make decisions. It is now incumbent upon you to make a decision as to the scope of the project, that's going to be funded now, and how it's gonna be funded. I have some experience in that. The Commissioners' Court, before I took over, was thrilled to be elected, had approved the renovation to the annex. For the second time in Kirk County's history, the jail commission has said, your jail is insufficient, you can no longer operate your jail. So we had to... has said your jail is insufficient. You can no longer operate your jail. So we had to build a new jail. The court prior to mine, Jonathan's, was just his as mine, approved construction of a new jail and the funding for it. They also approved a contract with a San Antonio Construction Company for the renovation of the annex. This was the jail. And the contract that they approved and the scope was to turn it into what we have now, which is offices, district court, et cetera. We got about a year into the project, and it was not a pleasant experience, because the San Antonio Construction Company that had the bid weren't real fond of coming up to Kerr County. And it actually got to the point where I threatened to subpoena the owner of the company if he didn't come up here and talk to us. We talked about how we were going to fund it. And it came down to a choice between we were going to take the money out of the reserves, or we were going to raise taxes. You want to talk about something unpopular, you talk about raising taxes. But the court unanimously agreed to raise the ad-form tax rate, exactly the amount necessary to pay for the new annex. Now, I'm not saying that y'all need to raise taxes to do this. What I'm saying is, you have the responsibility, by having been elected, to do it. Get on with it. I don't want to hear any more talk about liars and cheats. There are not any out here. But you all take responsibilities on your shoulders to figure out how you're going to finish this project, and what the scope is going to be. And I strongly urge you to get on with it, because it's not going to get any deeper. Last thing I'll say is, by my brief review of the statute this morning, this afternoon, whichever, all the days run together when you're old, it would be possible for the state to come in and close the current animal shelter. Boom. And then what you going to do? So, glad you all are elected, you're taking responsibility, but act on the responsibility you were given by the voters. You may not have been on the court when the bond was approved and the projects were discussed, but you're left with it. So get on with it. Thank you.
I don't believe anybody has called anybody a liar or cheat.
I know they haven't.
And I don't think anybody has talked about not building this building or funding this building. The whole discussion was about how are we going to? That's what, but y'all, you turned it into a different discussion. This discussion is about how are we going to pay for it? It's not about not doing anything. Yes, sir.
Yeah, it went off. Yeah, we were.
Did you lose your?
Our clerk had it. We heard the alarm.
Okay, we've heard from everybody that signed up to speak. Anything you want to add to the discussion?
No, I think, and I said what I was going to say, this was never about trying to not build a building. It's never been about not building completely what we should build. I do appreciate, Jeff, what you've done, trying to come up with some solutions. That's a great way to look at some things. And if we can not do all of those cuts, I think we shouldn't. I'm still, I'm sorry?
One more speaker, maybe.
Oh, did you have more speakers?
Well, one more, apparently.
Three minutes, is that right? I'll hit it.
But I think it's our responsibility to show how we're going to fund something, which was what started this whole conversation.
Ma'am, go ahead, go ahead.
My name's Karen Johnson. I live at 586 Whiskey Canyon Road in Kerrville. I am the Dog Rescue Coordinator, volunteer for Kerrville Pets Alive. I spend probably six hours a day at the shelter, and I work with the dogs. My job is to get the dogs adopted and out to rescue in order to prevent euthanasia of the dogs. We've done pretty good at reducing the euthanasia rate. I just want to speak to the statements that were made about kennels and Sallyporks. Right now, our kennels are inadequate, yes. I'm afraid if you reduce the amount of kennels down to 17 or 18, our euthanasia rate is going to go way up, way up. We can get 12, 13 dogs in one day, and we can have eight or nine sitting there. So that means people, dogs have to be euthanized in order to make space. Right now, I think we have about 26 open kennels, and we euthanize it. They give me a euthanasia slip at 16 or 17 full kennels. Our county has a problem with strays and abandonment. And we fill the kennels up every week. I can get these dogs out, down to two dogs, and the next day I'll have 16. Going down to 16 or 17 or 18 kennels, we're going to go back to euthanizing every week. Also, Sallyporks. I spend my entire day there with volunteers, and my number one concern is safety. The Sallyporks provide safety for transporting and transferring of an animal from a vehicle into the building. Unless we have a system that is enclosed there, we're going to lose dogs, because it's very easy to slip out of a hatch pole, a leash, someone turns their head, dog takes off. That's a very big safety issue for the county. And it has been known, even with the Sallyport, for dogs and cats to get over the fence and go. We have quarantined dogs that come in on those trucks. You don't have an enclosed system, that quarantine dog who just bit somebody can get loose and take off. And it's very important for the staff and for the volunteers that are there, and anybody else walking through the building, that dogs are not loose. And that Sallyport is the only place that we can secure an animal loose to get them into the building to be secured. I'm just afraid that someone's going to get hurt, dogs are going to get loose, and the community's going to suffer. I don't feel as though a Sallyport can be left open.
Thank you. Okay. Any more discussion? Any closing statements?
Yes.
Keep them brief.
Thank you all for the discussion. I appreciate it. I do recommend, we do come to a decision as a court, I'll leave that up to how we do that, but my recommendation does still stand. Just to repeat that one more time, so everyone's clear, the 212,000 for IOC, remove any change of the building that's going on and occurring right now, sell the property in the future and use that money to get us up to FOC. That's it. Anyone else?
No.
Well, I'd like to say something. I instigated the formation of a capital improvement planning committee. And I convinced the court unanimously to appoint the committee. Every commissioner appointed one person, and I appointed one person. And I chaired it. Jonathan was with me the whole way. We sat through meetings, we went on site visits, we reviewed countless data that was provided to us. Fred was there, Brenda was there, for three years. Three years. And we finally put three propositions together and got them to the people to vote. And there was a tremendous animosity against the bond issue. And that was, the first two propositions were soundly defeated. Message sent, heard, enacted on. The other message that was sent that, back then, this was November 24?
Two.
Two? Three?
No, two.
Two.
2022.
Was a convincing majority win for Proposition Three, to build an animal control facility. And it was worded on the ballot to be what was being represented in the exhibits that we had. We had posters, we had renditions, we had drawings, we had all kinds of things. And what was represented to the people about this animal control facility is fairly reflected in the drawings that were finally prepared. And they had input. And what was prepared at the time, if you remember, that was after an 18-month delay because of FEMA on our site. I think, how long was it, 18 months? About that? Yeah. We finally got the opportunity to put out a request for proposal. And when we did that, we already knew that we didn't have enough money to build what was in the bond issue, what was in Proposition Three. We didn't have it. And we knew we didn't have it. And we talked about it. And when we put together the RFP, I haven't looked at it recently, but I'm pretty sure, if memory serves me right, no kennels were included in that. We didn't include the kennels, that I remember. We knew for a long time that we were going to have to buy these things. And we knew we didn't have the money. But we were obligated by law to pursue and build the animal control facility, which I am still 100% supportive of. Is it going to cost us more money than we originally thought years ago? Yeah, it is. Is that my fault? Is that the court's fault? Maybe so. You know, we did the best we could with what we had at the time. But we're obligated to build this facility. And it will be my vote to build the facility as it was originally designed to do. Now, what this court decides to do will be up to the court. If there are cost-saving revisions that we can make, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I want to make sure that the people that pass this bond approve of the revisions we're making. Because this was your project. And you can fault me for robbing Peter to pay Paul. But as your county judge, believe it or not, that's how we have not raised taxes for the last six years. In fact, we have lowered the tax rate in five of those six years, and in the first year, we just left it the same way, same it was. So finding the money and being able to secure cooperation from a department, like Road and Bridge, to help fund this, which she's doing out of goodness of her heart, putting off getting the needed equipment, is trying to fulfill our commitment and our obligations and do the right thing. I heard one of the speakers say, you don't, we don't always get what we want. There's no rock and roll song, as they recall. But sometimes, just sometimes, you get what you need. And that's what I commit to you, is to find a way to get what we need. And you have my promise. Anything else? Since we don't have any action to take, there being no further business, court is adjourned.